Mike check. Hello? Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Happy Christmas or Merry New Year or Happy Thanksgiving. We're glad everybody's here. This is December the first. Twenty-four more days till Santa Claus comes. Twice a year, we recognize a student, a volunteer, and a teacher from our local schools here in Smyrna. And these are my... I like this the most whenever we do this. The city has nothing to do with selecting whoever the student or the volunteer or the teacher is. It's left up to the principal. So you got a problem with it? Take it up with the principal. I know, our superintendent's here, Chris Ragsdale. Y'all remember Chris from last time? Everybody was... Chris is doing a great job. And if y'all remember last time, the teachers were just surrounding like they are now. We have somebody new that's coming in. As I know everybody knows, Dale Gaddis is retiring. And his replacement is Kevin Daniel. And Kevin Daniel... Kevin? Back there in the back. Take a look at him now. He won't look like that in a year. He will be much older and worn out. We also have Susan Thayer. She's our new school representative from this area. And let's see. Who else is here that I need something out of? We got one thing before we get started. And this is, uh... We're gonna finish up at 7:30, so we'll get through as quick as we can. This is a great crowd. All the kids. And we got some stuff from Jimmy Nix and Saxby's. Hundred-dollar gift certificate for each person and for both locations. You ain't getting a hundred-dollar gift certificate. You're gonna get a free chicken biscuit and get some barbecue or something. But before we do that, I'd ask for Dale Gaddis to either come down in your cane or whatever or in your wheelchair. I have messed with this man from day one because he looks like, uh... You know, I'm always gonna put my foot in my mouth. You're like a white Steve Harvey. That's funny. I don't care who you are. He's always dressed to the nines. And he always is always representing the school district much better than I have. But Dale has been, uh... He's represented the schools in this district for how many years? Twenty years. And we have something for you. Where's... Quit with that. Don't do it in front of everybody.
It's a coat.
Yeah, right. Dale, on behalf of the city of Smyrna, we want to give you this and thank you for the number of years you've served our community. Congratulations on your retirement. This was... It's not the regular jaunt. It's got a Smyrna logo up there. So we'd like to give you this and thank you for all that you've done for our community. We'll say... Yeah, good. We got one more presentation. We get Ms. Keeney from King Springs, who probably owes this man more than anybody for him getting her promoted.
That is not true. On behalf of the Smyrna schools, we got together after we knew that Mr. Gaddis was retiring, and we couldn't think of a better community representative to represent the Smyrna schools for the community award. So we've got our own individual community members coming out. But we've also made this recognition to Dale, who has stuck with Area Two since the beginning of Area Superintendent's, who has known Smyrna, who has lived in Smyrna, who has loved Smyrna and loved us, even though we learned from Max to treat him very unkindly sometimes. When he would go to our schools, he would start around and we'd call and say, "Silver Fox is on the run." Silver Fox, Silver Fox. We were unmerciful to him in many ways, but it was all in love. And we can't think of a better representative to name as a Smyrna community member for the Mayor's Award than Dale Gaddis.
Did he get his... Somebody needs to get that. That cost us about $300. Somebody needs to get that jaunt. I don't care about them. Put it back in there. He'll probably take it back and trade it in and get something. Thank you, Dale. I was gonna... You take up more than 30 seconds. I'll cut you off.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Smyrna is a wonderful, wonderful place to live, and it's a great place to go to school. And your support means everything to the education here in the city. And I would like to personally and professionally thank the city, all of you all, the principals, and the friends of education here for what you do. So thank you very much.
We got a couple of three council members here. Tara Nullwich from Ward Three. Corky Charles Welch from Ward Four. Melanie Pritchett, Mayor Pro Tim from Ward One. Everybody know who I am? Okay. Yeah, there you go. Yes, sir. See, you want something. Argyle. Robert Babe. I finally learned how to pronounce his name. You go first and make the introductions and go from there. Everybody get plenty to eat? It'll be on your next water bill.
Good evening. Well, that's a hard act to follow. I'd like to start by thanking Mayor Bacon and Council for taking the time to recognize these special individuals. First, I'm proud to recognize the following recipients of this semester's Mayor's Awards from Argyle Elementary. First fifth-grade student Danielle Crossland. Danielle's been described by her teacher, Ms. Gibson, as respectful, kind, and thoughtful. She's taken a leadership role in each of her classes, patiently helping others while maintaining superior grades of her own. As a member of the school's safety patrol, Danielle's an excellent role model for all of our students. She's also active in chorus, Girl Scouts, and anchors the morning show. In her free time, Danielle likes to read and play video games. After completing high school, Danielle aspires to become a veterinarian. We're excited about what the future holds for this remarkable young lady. Congratulations. Next, I'm proud to recognize Argyle's Teacher of the Year, kindergarten teacher Jen Murchie. Professional, kind, hardworking, and committed. These are just a few words that describe Ms. Murchie. Jennifer exemplifies a commitment to the education of children. The message she consistently communicates to her students is loud and clear, that a quality education is priceless. She sets high expectations for her students and holds them accountable for meeting those expectations. Every minute of every day is focused on providing each of her students with quality lessons that enrich their learning. Ms. Murchie truly cares about each and every one of her students. She has a passion for teaching, and for the last 11 years has been making a difference in the lives of her students. Thanks for all that you do. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge Argyle's Partner in Education, Mr. Tom Extrem. Tom works for IBM and is a volunteer with the Keep Smyrna Beautiful organization. Tom and his group, each year, spread pine straw, clean up the landscaping, and in general, help beautify our school environment. We are very grateful to him and his coworkers for participating in this way, as we see the results all year round. Thank you for contributing to Argyle and its families.
Next is Belmont Hills. Earth and Nelson, Principal. Don't anybody leave after you get your awards. We'll track you down.
All right, well, the recipients for Belmont Hills, please come up. Come over here. Right back here. Line it up. Line it up. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to come out here tonight. This past year, we were very fortunate to secure funds to purchase video equipment required to allow us to produce a live morning news show. And of course, I had no idea how to use any of the equipment. But the vision was there, and so we purchased the equipment. The students that you see here took charge, and with the guidance of our media specialist, Ms. Diane Brennan, they learned how to use all the equipment. They now are totally self-sufficient. They know their roles as newscasters, directors, and camera, crew members. They completely run the show pretty much basically on their own. And they're an amazing team that collaborate, and they work so well together to ensure that our morning announcements go off and that they're fun, that they're informative, they're on time, and they keep us on track every morning. And so I'm so proud to present the Student Mayor Awards to the following. Karen Hernandez. And that is the Belmont Hills News Crew.
Congratulations, your hair.
I think you look good like that, Mayor. All right, so moving on to our Teacher Award winner. I'm so very fortunate to have a great staff at Belmont Hills. And the teacher that was nominated is not only a coworker, but she's a leader and a friend. She's been a part of Belmont Hills for the past nine years and oversees our Saturday Discovery Program. She is also a social committee chairperson, which in a school is equivalent to being the CEO of a company or something like that, and is instrumental in every part of our school. A coworker wrote about her. LaShawn is always positive, kind, encouraging. She is always working hard on her students' behalf and goes the extra mile by exuding boundless energy in helping with the staff as well. I truly personally don't know what I would do without her on my staff. So it gives me great pleasure to present the Teacher's Mayor's Award to Ms. LaShawn Lee. Come on over here. And last but not least, our Community Volunteer Award goes to our PTA President. She has taken over a job that hasn't been filled in years by a parent at Belmont Hills. At any given time or day, you can find her organizing the PTA closet, which she calls her new room, and preparing the PTA events, volunteering in classrooms, or just helping out wherever needed. She's definitely filled a void that was desperately needed at our school, and we so appreciate everything that she does for the school and for the students. I'm honored to present Ms. Kimba Whitaker with the Volunteer Mayor's Award.
Angela White, Green Acres. Let's give Angela a big hand.
One more. Ms. Juarez, come on down. I too want to thank you, Mayor Bacon. This is just phenomenal. It's my pleasure to introduce three people who make Green Acres the place to be. I want to start with Laquita Wooton. Laquita's a fifth-grade student at Green Acres. She is a straight A student at Green Acres. She works very hard, always has a smile on her face, and is always willing to do whatever it takes to learn the next thing. So come meet Mayor Bacon. I have a core group of volunteers that I call on when I need someone. This is my right hand. Ms. Juarez will come and count copies. She'll make copies. She'll sweep up after PTA meetings. She will cook tamales, very good tamales, for hundreds of tamales for our fall festival. She is without a doubt one of the best volunteers we have ever had. So please meet Mayor Bacon. And finally is my teacher. This is Ms. Laurie Lincoln. She is my PE teacher. She is also the director of my ASP program, which is an ASP program for five schools. She runs it like no one else possibly can. She is an incredible teacher leader at my school. She has taken on more responsibilities than I want to admit to giving to her in front of the people against that wall. But she is an incredible teacher leader and once again, someone who makes Green Acres the place to be.
That's great. Can you make tamales, though?
No. But I have connections.
Oh, you lost... I think those are yours. It's a hundred-dollar gift certificate. King Springs Elementary, Linda Keeney. Ms. Keeney, if you will, remember how much time you took before. You'll be deducted that time.
Good evening and thanks to the mayor and council for doing this. You know, you feel old, if my King Springs recipients would come up. You know you're old when you have a student that you knew their parents when they were teenagers. And I remember when the Pickards brought their daughters to King Springs, and it was six years ago, and they said to me, "You only gotta give us six years." And I said, "Sure." And I thought to myself, "In no way in the world I'm gonna be here six years." But because of students like Maddie Pickard, I have been there now for eight years. This is a young lady that I want to read you some of the things that your teachers have said about you, Maddie. Besides the fact that she's very active in school, she's a melody maker, she's in robotics, she's a member of our Beta Club, she's on the Yearbook Club. But these are the most important things. An all-around great kid, nice, helpful, and smart. Sets high goals for herself and does whatever it takes to achieve her goals. Goes above and beyond in everything she does, well-liked by your peers, and seen as a leader in the classroom. Very aware if other students are upset or struggling with something and takes initiative to either help them or lets her teacher know in a quiet, unassuming way. She wants others to succeed as much as she does, and that's a rare quality for a young lady this age. So Maddie, I love you, girl. Our teacher is Joanna Susterian. It didn't take me but just a little while to learn how to pronounce that. And a couple of years ago, we were lucky enough to be able to add to our special rotation a part-time STEM teacher, which many of you may not know means science, technology, engineering, and math. I interviewed Joanna via Skype. Went home, because I couldn't get on the network, Mr. Ragsdale, at King Springs to do Skype, so I went home and sat on my sofa and... Sorry. Sat on the sofa and interviewed Joanna. She has been the driving force for our STEM program at King Springs. She is now full-time. And if you go in her class, it's the best class in the school to go in because it's always project-based. Today, they were smelling sand, and some of it did not smell good. They were learning how to filter water. So she's been a wonderful asset to our school and the driving force behind our STEM initiative. Joanna Susterian. And my volunteer is not here. It is Tracy Santos. She is our PTA President and has been for two years. She has been the driving force behind STEM because she herself is an engineer. And she has increased the fundraising at King Springs by double, and this year purchased over 100 iPads for us through the PTA fundraiser. So we recognize Tracy Santos as our PTA volunteer.
She don't, uh... You don't show, you don't get the coupons, you don't get the lapel pin, she don't get nothing. And talk about a career ender. You know, Mr. Ragsdale, by the computer. In front of everybody? O-U-T. What a way to go. Beverly? Don't act like that principal from King Springs.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bacon and Council, for this opportunity. I always look forward to this evening. And my recipients are here. I am really honored to introduce the Nicahack recipients. This is Lauren Laprade, and Lauren is a phenomenal student. Her first-grade teacher is the one that nominated her. Do you know who that is? There you go. So I can't say enough wonderful things about this young lady. In addition to being very excited and very serious about teaching and learning, she takes part in a lot of activities at our school. She's on our WKOC, garden club, Science Olympiad, jogging club. She has participated many times in the PTA reflections, and she made it to the state level last year. Lauren is always friendly, always has a smile on her face, and she too is always willing to help adults and students at our school. One of the things that your teacher said about you is that Lauren is dependable and can be counted on to do the job no matter what. She's a special young lady, and she represents Nicahack well. So it's my honor and I'm very proud of her to recommend her and to have her be the recipient this evening. And I need to add that her parents are very, very involved at our school, and I appreciate their time. All right. This is my parent volunteer, Tracy Byrd. And Tracy has been at Nicahack ever since I started eight years ago because one of the phenomenal things that she does is she makes signs for people's classrooms and offices. Whenever we get new staff members in, they can be sure to find a brand-new sign outside their classroom doors. And everyone's sign is unique. No two are alike. So we really appreciate her for that. In addition to that, she took on the responsibility of being our yearbook editor. And you can see her around our school taking pictures. And that's, that's not a job that sometimes people see you coming and they don't want to see you coming, but she's very calm about it. She's not intrusive. She does a phenomenal job with that. And we are really proud to have her as one of our parents and one of our volunteers. So thank you. And I am really proud to have her get the Mayor's Award this evening. And this is, this is my teacher, Diane Cordell. Diane started at Nicahack my second year, I believe. I hired her, and I am so glad that I hired her. She is a fabulous staff member. Diane has been the team leader for the past couple of years, and she really has gone above and beyond duty as it relates to her duties as a teacher and as a team leader. On her team, there have been a lot of new teachers, and she has stepped up to the plate, and she has mentored those teachers, and she intercedes for them whenever they need anything. And one of the things that Diane is really known for by me is during a very tragic time in my life, she knew that I wasn't cooking much, and so she would bring me dinner, she would bring me lunch, and I appreciate her for that. And I am so proud to have her on our staff. So it's my honor to introduce her to you tonight.
Who's next? My program says. Norton Park. Doug Dartry. Where's Doug at? Oh, he come. Just, uh... And I say this every year, that those that receive this award, I mean, you're simply just the best. You're the best. That's why we do it twice a year. But it's great. All right, here go Doug.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This is a wonderful event. It's great to be surrounded by people who are invested in education and invested in our community. And I've got three, three of those individuals invested in Norton Park here. This, this very handsome gentleman to my right, this is Quincy Williams. And he is an amazing young man. And I don't typically do this, but I'm gonna, I'd like to read to Quincy and to you all what his teacher wrote about him, because she said it very succinctly and very, very well. "I have the privilege of teaching Quincy for the second year in a row." She looped up with him. He didn't get held back. "He brings a kind of energy to the classroom that every teacher should have the joy of experiencing. He keeps me on my toes and keeps us laughing with his witty sense of humor. Quincy puts forth his best effort in all the work he does. Quincy's character stands out above many. He goes the extra mile to make sure his teachers and classmates are on point by providing assistance when needed and helps keep our classroom tidy and presentable. He always represents our class well throughout the school. He is friendly and helpful to his peers. Quincy has a heart of gold and a thirst for knowledge that is rewarding for me as a teacher and a great example for others. I know Quincy has a promising future ahead of him, and I hope he remembers me when he makes it big. He is and will be successful in everything he puts his mind to." Quincy Williams. This lovely lady to my right, this is Ms. Kathleen Fagan. She is an amazing teacher at Norton Park. And let me tell you, there are three words that just administration loves to hear, and those three words are, "I got this." And Ms. Fagan, that's what she does. She's got this. She's got teaching. She's got leading. She's got any challenge you put in front of her down, and it is very comforting and it's very proud, proud to be a principal, to work with somebody like that. She accepts tough challenges. She's creative. She's innovative. She challenges her colleagues. She challenges her students. She's exceedingly dedicated to Norton Park, among the first in and the last to leave. And it's easy to see why she is a teacher leader and Norton Park's current Teacher of the Year. Kathleen Fagan. This young man to my right, this is Mr. Ron Nelson. Ron is an amazing man with an amazing heart for Norton Park and our school and community. He recently built steps for our seven kindergarten classrooms so our little precious Eagles, where the Norton Park Eagles, they could climb up the steps and they could reach the active boards and be interactive with him. So that was wonderful. Even more recently, he built a robotics table for our robotics team, and he can grill a very mean hot dog.
Where's Doug at? Oh, he come. Just, and I say this every year, that those that receive this award, I mean, you're simply just the best. You're the best. That's why we do it twice a year, but it's great. All right, here go Doug. Good to see you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This is a wonderful event. It's, it's great to be surrounded by people who are invested in education and invested in our community, and I've got three, three of those individuals invested in Norton Park here. This, this very handsome gentleman to my right, this is Quincy Williams, and he is an amazing young man, and I don't typically do this, but I'm gonna, I'd like to read to Quincy and to you all what his teacher wrote about him because she said it very succinctly and very, very well. I have the privilege of teaching Quincy for the second year in a row. She looped up with him. He didn't get held back. He brings a kind of energy to the classroom that every teacher should have the joy of experiencing. He keeps me on my toes and keeps us laughing with his witty sense of humor. Quincy puts forth his best effort in all the work he does. Quincy's character stands out above many. He goes the extra mile to make sure his teachers and classmates are on point by providing assistance when needed and helps keep our classroom tidy and presentable. He always represents our class well throughout the school. He is friendly and helpful to his peers. Quincy has a heart of gold and a thirst for knowledge that is rewarding for me as a teacher and a great example for others. I know Quincy has a promising future ahead of him, and I hope he remembers me when he makes it big. He is and will be successful in everything he puts his mind to. This lovely lady to my right, this is Ms. Kathleen Fagan. She is an amazing teacher at Norton Park, and let me tell you, there are three words that just administration loves to hear, and those three words are, "I got this." And Ms. Fagan, that's what she does. She's got this. She's got teaching, she's got leading, she's got any challenge you put in front of her down, and it is very comforting and it's very proud, proud to be a principal, to work with somebody like that. She accepts tough challenges, she's creative, she's innovative, she challenges her colleagues, she challenges her students, she's exceedingly dedicated to Norton Park, among the first in and the last to leave, and it's easy to see why she is a teacher leader and Norton Park's current Teacher of the Year. This young man to my right, this is Mr. Ron Nelson. Ron is an amazing man with an amazing heart for Norton Park and our school and community. He recently built steps for our seven kindergarten classrooms so our little precious Eagles, where the Norton Park Eagles, they could climb up the steps and they could reach the active boards and be interactive with him. So that was wonderful. Even more recently, he built a robotics table for our robotics team, and he can grill a very mean hot dog. Wonderful, wonderful person to our school, and he's married to a former Mayor's Education Award recipient, his lovely wife Renee Nelson.
James Ward, Smyrna Elementary, the public school of, I keep pulling up there wanting to get groceries. Great school, great principal. Good, James.
I'm very proud tonight to introduce the recipients from Smyrna Elementary. This young man to my right is Mr. Jose Esquivil. Ms. Anna Riley is our parent liaison, and Stephen and Haley McQuade and their son Charlie, they are our volunteer recipients. First and foremost, this young man to my right is an amazing fifth grader at Smyrna Elementary, and his teachers, Mr. York and Ms. Cranford, have said some wonderful things about him. When Jose entered our classroom on the first day of school, we automatically knew that there was something very special about him. His calm demeanor and infectious smile immediately lit up the classroom. He always manages to keep himself busy, being the class greeter, the Smyrna Elementary tour guide, and a news anchor for our school's morning news. He is a student who is constantly looking for ways to help others. Whether helping a fellow classmate or his teachers, he's always there to lend a hand. In addition to being a great helper, Jose is also an amazing leader. He consistently uses the seven habits of highly effective kids to ensure that he is always focused in class, turning in his assignments, setting goals, and making good grades. He is highly respected and loved by his teachers, his peers, and his administrators. We can't think of another student more deserving of this award, Mr. Jose. Ms. Anna Riley is my right hand and my left, and I think most everyone at Smyrna would say that. She is our current School Professional of the Year. She serves as our parent liaison, just always smiling, always happy, always calm, and always there to do whatever's needed to lend a hand. So we appreciate all that she brings to Smyrna Elementary and to the Smyrna community, These wonderful people to my right, these are my go-to parents. We have a lot of go-to parents at Smyrna Elementary, but Haley and Stephen have set themselves apart as natural leaders at our school. Before Smyrna opened, we met them when we were still at Brown before we ever finished the school building, and they were actively involved in coordinating meetings with new parents, helping to organize PTA. These individuals are at Smyrna. They both have full-time jobs, and you know Haley works seven days a week, and Stephen flies all over the world, but I seem to see them so many times during the week because they're always at Smyrna. Probably my finest moment with Haley was when we had the privilege of spreading about 200 bales of pine straw around Smyrna's campus. Neither one of us enjoyed that, but we made it a lot of fun. But these two individuals are just an incredible part of our school community. They volunteer in classrooms, they volunteer with PTA, they do whatever is needed to get the job done, and Stephen serves as a watchdog and just incredible. And then this little fella is always proud to see his parents in school. So a round of applause for Stephen and Haley McQuade.
(inaudible). His buddy.
(inaudible).
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Leslie, I hadn't called you yet. Leslie Mansfield, Teasley. Hey.
Hey.
How you doing?
Great. How are you?
You can talk all you want to.
Thanks.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Bacon and Council, for allowing us the opportunity to talk about some of our finest at Teasley. I'm gonna start with this amazing young man right here. This is Alejandro Reyes, and what I'm gonna say about Alejandro is not so much about what he does as a student, but it's who he is. Alejandro arrived at Teasley midway through his fourth grade year. He's a fifth grader now, and that's a tough spot for a kid to come in in the middle of the year in a school where, you know, other kids have been together since they were in kindergarten, and pretty immediately Alejandro had made a name for himself because of his great character. And he was nominated by his fifth-grade teacher, and I want to say a few things about what Ms. Waldrop had to say about you and Ms. Messiah. They said he is an outstanding citizen, he's a role model for his peers, he puts forth his best effort in everything he does, whether it's big or small, he has a welcoming demeanor, he has a great sense of humor, he's a problem solver, and he is always willing to help others. And I think those are some pretty amazing qualities for a fifth-grade student to show, and his music teacher is standing right next to him, and I hear her saying, "Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm." So Ms. Mungin sees that every day in class. So Alejandro, we are proud of who you are, and we are so thankful that you're at Teasley. And next, the short person standing right next to me is our amazing music teacher at the main campus at Teasley Elementary. This is Roxanne Mungin. Roxanne is, I think, truly one of the most beloved people at Teasley. We've had to move her in the carpool line on her duty spot in the morning because she was right in front, and she kept causing traffic jams because everybody wants to stop and hug and speak to Ms. Mungin, so we had to get her a little off to the side where we could keep the traffic flow going. It's just true. Ms. Mungin's been at Teasley for, this is her ninth year. Her chorus has just a mere 140 students in it. Oh, Mayor, that's so good. Can I borrow that for a second? So 140 students in The Treble Tones, who will be performing tomorrow night at the, at the Smyrna tree lighting, and then on Thursday night again at another tree lighting around the corner. And Ms. Mungin is just, she instills a true love of music and the arts in her students. She has incredibly high expectations. The things that she has them produce are truly amazing. I was just getting schooled on recorder karate earlier and all the different belts that they can earn. So Ms. Mungin, we appreciate all you do and all that you are at Teasley.
Thank you.
And then we have another teacher that we're honoring. This is Lisa For. Lisa For is our kindergarten, a kindergarten teacher, and she's the Teacher of the Year at Teasley Primary. And I can tell you, if you have a child going into kindergarten, what you want is for them to have an experience with someone as fabulous as Lisa For. Just giving a child that first experience in school, making them love learning, love being in that classroom. Lisa is just the epitome of that. She's a wonderful mentor for our new teachers, she serves on our leadership team, always looking out for the best interest of the school and for every student. And so just know that you are appreciated for who you are and all that you do, and our, our children certainly benefit from having you as their kindergarten teacher. And this is Sandra Morris. Sandra is an amazing mom of two boys, a first-grader Samuel and a fourth-grader Everett, that are our students. Sandra has served as PTA treasurer and just kind of inherited a little bit of a mess and has got the most amazing perseverance, I think, that I've ever seen in my life. Just a wonderful charact, character quality that you have. This year, we have had, our secretaries at both of our buildings have had deaths in the family that have taken them away for a week. And you can imagine, when your secretary is gone, you kind of tend to freak out a little bit, and you pick up the phone and say, "Sandra, we need a little help." And I'm not kidding you, she could run the place. I could have taken off those two weeks and no one would have ever noticed, thanks to just the hard work, and she knows our kids, she knows our parents, she knows our teachers, and just supports everyone so well. She's teaching Spanish to our first graders' class each week, going in and doing some lessons with them, giving them a little bit of enrichment in the foreign language, and just you are an amazing volunteer, and we appreciate who you are and all you do for
She dropped the Hope Diamond. Campbell Middle School, Jonathan Tanner, new principal. Hey, say hey to Mr. Ragsdale when you go by. Glad you're here. Good to see you. You can, you can relax. It's okay. I'll do my best.
Thank you, Mayor Bacon, for this opportunity to represent some of the people that are truly the heart and soul of Campbell Middle School. And I am new to Area Two, so I am very excited to be a part of this activity. I've not been a part of something like this before, so I really appreciate that you all do this for the community. I'm gonna start with our student, Carly McCurry. In addition to being one of our most outstanding academic students, she truly embodies the heart and soul of being a humanitarian. When I asked for nominations from the staff, I got several nominations for this student, and many of them said that she's volunteered in many different capacities and organizations, included Seven Bridges, Atlanta Day Shelter, Buckhead Christian Ministry, Our House, Atlanta Food Bank, Kindred Spirit, and Mus Ministries. In addition to caring about the world around her and taking action to make a positive change in the community, she helped to start Campbell Middle School's yearbook, and she, oh, the newspaper, not the yearbook, sorry, newspaper, and she remains active in many organizations. She truly is a leader in our school and is gonna make a huge difference in the world. And this is one of the teachers that nominated Carly, actually, Ms. Childress. When I think of teachers that understand how to get students to, to develop critical thinking skills, this is one of the first teachers that I think of. I've been extremely impressed with what she's doing in her social studies class, but beyond that, she's also serving as a leader in the school. She serves as the coordinator for the department. She helps new teachers that are struggling and helps them plan and encourages them. She leads many professional learning opportunities within the school, for the district, and recently presented it at a state conference. So she is doing her part in changing education beyond just her classroom. She sponsors the yearbook. She serves on our building leadership team, and most importantly, she always maintains a positive attitude despite the challenging job that our teachers have today. She inspires her colleagues and me to continue to do what's right for students and to make a positive difference in their lives. Thank you, Ms. Childress. And my parent recognition, my community member, I've already gotten a sense that Ms. Mansfield wants him back at Teasley, but we're gonna keep him at Campbell Middle. He's already made a huge impact this year. He was one of the first parents I met during my meet and greet, and he volunteered to help me organize the Watchdog Dad Program, which we did not have at the school. So he understands the importance of a male role model and male presence in the building, and he has pretty much single-handedly developed that program here at Campbell Middle. So thank you, Mr. Evans, and thank you for all that you're doing for our students.
Check this out.
Great mind.
Forty-eight portly. Dr. T. from Griffin Middle. While he's on his way up here, I, I think the volunteers really make a difference in, in giving back to their schools. I mean, they really do. Dr. T., I didn't, I didn't mess your name up, did I?
I was waiting to see what he was gonna do to my name this year. That's not too bad, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, for having us this evening. This right here is the Million Dollar Smile. This is one of the first students that I met when I walked into the doors at Griffin, Ms. Ariana Pareja. She is an amazing, amazing young lady. Some of her teachers, some of the comments that her teachers made is that she makes a big difference in the classroom, she's looked upon as a leader, she brings the conversation to another level, and this is gonna be a very, very successful young lady. When you make your first million, I'm gonna come knocking for a donation to Griffin Middle School, so I promise you that. I also want to thank her parents for raising such an amazing young lady. So thank you, guys, Ms. Ariana Pareja. And this is Ms. Nowayabi. She is a math teacher at Griffin Middle School, does an amazing job with our kids. She's getting ready to have a baby the end of April, and she, when she came to tell me to break the news, she said it's gonna be right after testing. So, so I'll be here through testing, so even the baby's cooperating, but Ms. Ayabi does an outstanding job, and I'll, I'll share just a quick story about Ms. Ayabi, and she doesn't even know this, this is the first time she hears this. You know, my fear factor has worn off at Griffin Middle School, and when I have to deal with children who really don't want to listen, I tell them I'm gonna send it to Ms. Ayabi. And don't let, don't let this frame fool ya, nobody wants to mess with Ms. Ayabi. I tell them, "You're going right to Ms. Ayabi's class," and they straighten right up. So, and I, I haven't even shared this. Every, you guys remember you had that teacher, that just one teacher you just, you didn't want to mess with? Here's Ms. Ayabi. I still... I still ask her for her pass when I see her in the hall with a bunch of kids. I'm still, you know, she's like one of the kids, and, you know, "Where's your pass, young lady?" And she gets closer, I realize it, it's not one of the kids, but this is Ms. Nowayabi. She does a great job, so. And our volunteer, this is Mr. Van Grady. When Mr. Grady came into the building a couple of years back, we had begun to talk, and you know, sometimes you just meet somebody and you just strike up a conversation and it just clicks, and that's what it was like with, with Mr. Grady. In our conversation, I found out actually he, he is a U.S. Marshal, so we're gonna put that one to work. So not that we have many, but we have a couple of students who have a hard time interpreting the rules sometimes, and they, they kind of repeat over and over, and I asked Van if he'd come in and speak to some of our kids, and he had come in, he, he had spoken to some of our kids and made a big difference. I think you scared him a little bit, so. Between Van and Ms. Ayabi, we got him. We, we, we got, we, we got him at Griffin, so. We also have a big literacy initiative at Griffin, and we, our seventh-grade class was doing a unit on heroes, and they were writing about heroes, and Mr. Grady had come in and, as our hero, and had spoken to all the seventh-grade classes. He gave up an entire day of his time to speak to our seventh graders, which was great. Also, he's part of our school council. He serves on our school council, so he, he, he's an amazing, he's a friend, a great asset to the school, and we're gonna miss you when you leave this year, so. It's Mr. Van Grady.
We're moving right along here. Still, the best one so far has been Green Acres.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Denise McGee, proud principal of Campbell High School, and I too would like to thank the mayor and council for the opportunity to recognize individuals who are making a difference at Campbell High School. And I want to start with our phenomenal student right here, Naomi Alam, and she is a senior. Naomi does everything at Campbell High School. She is the president of our Beta Club, she is one of our leaders of the IB Leadership Team, she is a member of National Honor Society, our dance team, she does lots of things, from organizing cancer fundraisers to mentoring programs for our incoming ninth graders, and on top of all of that, she's able to maintain a grade point average of 4.71. So Naomi, we are extremely proud of you and all that you do to make a difference at Campbell Ms. Leslie Robottom is a clerk at Campbell High School, and she is a phenomenal employee, exemplifies professionalism, dedication, she's always willing to help regardless of what she is doing, a constant smile, and she will drop whatever she's doing to help a student, a staff, or... she will drop whatever she's doing to help a student, a staff, or parent. Leslie exemplifies the utmost of professionalism, very conscientious, she's always willing to do whatever we need her to do, and she's extremely savvy when it comes to using Excel and my right hand for putting any spreadsheet together that I need. So Ms. Robottom, we truly appreciate you and all that you do at Campbell High School. Oh my gosh, words cannot express the gratitude for the next two individuals, Mr. and Mrs. Cash, Eric Cash and Holly Cash, two true champions for Campbell High School. Oh my gosh, I cannot even begin to run on with the things that they will do without us even requesting assistance. If they see a need, they will absolutely step up and do it. And just after the fact, I'm like, "Who did this?" And I'm told, "Oh, Mr. and Mrs. Cash took care of that." So two truly dedicated, loyal supporters of Campbell High School. I tell you, it's impeccable what you do, and we truly appreciate all that you do, and there is no other way for us to express that than to recognize you with the Mayor's Award. So thank you for all that you do for Campbell.
Oh my gosh, thank you, Mayor.
Somebody here from Haven Academy? I think this is the first time that we have recognized, it's not, second time? Third time? Bryce Doe? Oh, Crystal something? Well, I didn't get on the Doe. John Doe? Who gets the mic?
Well, I am Ms. Mitchell Wilson. I work at the Hawthorne Center and our, oh, thank you so much for this opportunity, Mayor Baker and City Council.
Baker, not Baker.
Baker, thank you. Okay, I told myself I was not going to get the giggles, and he about to make me get the giggles. Okay, so I do want to take a moment and recognize the Hawthorne teacher. Her name is Crystal Smires. Come on over here. I heard one of the other principals talk about Skyping, and this is how we found Crystal. We Skyped her, and I had already told my dog not to make any noise when I was Skyping, and along, about midway through the interview, a little cat walks across the Skype. But she did a phenomenal job of ignoring that, and we're so excited to have Ms. Smires as our first, one of our first-year teachers. And she just does a phenomenal job with working with our students with emotional disorders, just continues to seek ways to engage them in the learning process, has really high expectations for all our learners, is a come early, stay late, like we sometimes argue over who's going to have the cot at Hawthorne. So a phenomenal job with Ms. Crystal Smires.
My name is Jean Mason. I'm the building administrator at Fitzley. And thank you, I almost said governor, Mayor Baker, for this opportunity. I'd like to recognize Mr. Doe. He started with us as a pair pro about six years ago, and we watched him grow into a teacher. He's one of our first responders in crisis situations, and I have literally seen this man jump over fences in a single bound. And yes, we do have capes that we give out at our He's committed to the students at Fitzley, and one of his greatest contributions is our garden. We call him Farmer Doe. He comes up during vacation time and during freezes and covers our plants so the kids can have fun and play in that garden. We appreciate him in Fitzley, and it's a much better place because of him. Thank you, Mr. Doe. Okay, well, Campbell couldn't have the caches all to themselves. They also share themselves with us, and we are so grateful for them. We call them our guardian angels. They have single-handedly become our PTSA and provide all sorts of goodies for our dedicated Fitzley staff that they normally wouldn't receive. They are dedicated parents that have contributed generously to a future home lab. They provide fun items that make our fall and spring festivals so special and make special memories for our students. They support us as partner, and we feel so privileged just having them in our Fitzley family. We can't thank you enough.
I think that's the first time someone has gotten two Mayor's Awards. Quite deserving. They really give back to the schools of Holly and Eric. Last one, Whitfield Academy. That's one we've been looking for. Whitfield Academy. International Academy. What's the problem?
Oh, it's not my turn yet.
Yeah. I'll call you. I'm sorry, that's my bad. No, I'm just, I get a little delusional late in the evening. International Academy. International Academy.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. At the International Academy of Smyrna as an IB school, it is my pleasure to introduce Dobro Wilson Angbadaba, who absolutely exemplifies IB learner profile characteristics of being a thinker, being knowledgeable. He's a risk taker because he sets his own course, doesn't fall into the patterns that middle school students tend to do at times. He is caring and above all principled. I can absolutely count on him to do the right thing even when no one is watching. He is the current president of our junior beta, and it's his third year in junior beta and also serves on our student council. So congratulations to Dobro.
This is her second year as a parent at our school. They have three children in 1st grade, 4th grade, and 5th grade. They have a very busy household, but she always finds time to make time for us. She is one of the volunteers that I know you have at every school that will handle things and take care of it before it even becomes a request. One little story that I have to share, I don't know if you have a lost and found room that sort of takes on a life of its own? She and another volunteer, gas masks and all, emptied everything out, took it to the laundry, came back and started sorting to make sure that it got into the hands of the owners, and it was a task that I could never ask anyone to do, but she took that on. So, and I'm fortunate to have a place to bring her on to our staff. So as of tomorrow, she's a permanent member of our faculty, and I'm very excited about Our teacher photo op. Our teacher honorary unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but I would be remiss if I didn't say a few kind words. Curless Harris stepped into 2nd grade. It was a stretch for her this year. She's serving as my teacher leader in that team. She's our Teacher of the Year, and she is remarkable, and I just had to say something kind about her.
Thank you, Cur. Cur Schrock of International School Academy. Whitfield Academy. Where's that guy, where's that big tall guy at? Come on up, Cletus. Good to see you again.
Thank you, Max. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. We always go last at these things because we're a private school that starts with W, but this is a great event, and every year I get inspired and reminded about why we're all in this education calling together. And it's my privilege to be here representing Whitfield Academy. We're a Christ-centered, Christian school. We're in Smyrna. We have been in Smyrna since 2000, and this year we're having record enrollment, 770 students, pre-K through 12th grade. I serve as the upper school principal, and I want to recognize our people, and I'll do it quickly because I know we're last. Our Student of the Year is Cole Barber. Cole is just an example of why we do what we do at Whitfield. He's getting this award really for his leadership. He is the vice president of our senior class, but he does so much for our school. If there's an event or an activity, he is at the point, leading, organizing, recruiting, planning, and executing. He is a fine young man. He's carrying a full academic load with four AP classes this year. He's near the top of his class. He already has a full academic tuition scholarship to the University of Alabama. He's also been accepted to UGA, and he's awaiting notice from UNC and UVA. So he's very bright, but more than anything, it's his heart for the Lord and his heart for serving and leading others why he's getting this award tonight. Our Volunteer of the Year, Diane Wickham. Diane is the middle school vice president for our Whitfield Parent Association. She is someone who is always at the school with a smile on her face. She is a great ambassador for Whitfield. She believes in our mission. She's got two kids of her own in our middle school. She works tirelessly to organize the middle school WPA, lots of different committees and people who serve in that capacity. One of the places where she takes the lead is every semester we recognize our headmasters' list and principals' list students with a luncheon, and she does a great job just organizing those luncheons and making sure those students feel special for the accomplishments that they've received. So thank you, Diane, for all you do for us. And our final recipient is our Teacher of the Year, Steve Hellier. Steve is, he is a servant and a leader. He teaches our highest-level math classes. He teaches AP Calculus AB and AP Calculus BC. So he's brilliant. I go in his class, I have no idea what's going on, but I nod and smile, and he always gets the best AP scores in the school practically, so I trust that he knows what he's doing. But more than that, if you talk to our alumni, we have alumni who come back every college break to visit Whitfield. The number-one teacher they come to see is this guy. And the reason is because he cares for them and he invests in them. He doesn't take it easy on them. He's not just trying to be their buddy. He holds them accountable, but he really loves his students, and they get that. And that shows in the fact that he is our most visited teacher by our alumni. So thank you, Steve.
Congratulations to everyone again. We have the best schools in the Smyrna area and Cobb County, the state of Georgia, the United States, in my opinion. Tonight's just a great example of what it takes to make our schools whole. Thank y'all so much for being here. Have a
Yes, sir.
That'd be $200. But I'll do it for nothing. You can settle it on Craigslist tomorrow if you want to. Thanks so much for coming out. And our new guy, the old guy's going out on the crutch. I don't know why Ms. Kenny wanted to end her career. Yeah, here, make this quick. Let me, thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, first of all, I just want to take a moment and express my appreciation to the mayor and to the council, because this is one of those events and awards that is done for the right reason. It not only recognizes the students, but the staff and the community. And so I appreciate it. And it's also an event that keeps the mayor off the street and off the phone for at least an hour from talking to media. So, and as far as technology goes though, Linda, you know, it's always dangerous for the last person to get the mic after you talk. So you apparently don't know the right people to get Skype working. But again, congratulations to all of our students and staff and community volunteers because again, the volunteers, you know, it's just an amazing title, volunteer. I always take this opportunity to say, you know, you always come up with something that triggers an emotion, you know, a smell, a taste, a sound, a song, music, something. And when I hear the term volunteer, I always think about my grandfather, who was a World War II vet. And that generation, when it came time to go to task for this country, they volunteered. They didn't have to be drafted, they didn't have to be signed up, they didn't have to be drugged to go fight for our country, but they volunteered. So that's what I think about when I hear the term volunteer. So for all of the volunteers from each of our schools in Smyrna, thank you, because you help us, you help the staff make it a much better place for our students so that our teachers can do what they do best, and that's drive the teaching and learning in the classroom each and every day. So thank you, and thank you, Mayor and Council, again. Appreciate it.
Y'all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I went on a happy holiday, and y'all are dismissed unless y'all want to stay for the council meeting.[1794.46]